The board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Troop. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Triplet. Alderman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderman Howard. Alderman Florida. Alderman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderman Cruzen. President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Wessels. Alderman Florida. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Davis. Alderman French. Alderman Cruzen. Twenty-one present.
Quorum being present, I'll ask everyone in the chambers and the galleries who's able to stand to please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, Source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. Dispense with line item three, introduction of honored guests. Any introduction, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from twenty-third?
Yes, I'd like to have as my honored guest Celeste Reader from the Realtors, and I see Steve Spreck and David Holmes over there, so I'd like to have them all as my honored guests.[154.01][154.01](Applause).
Alderman from the ninth?
President, members of the board, I'd like to have for my honored guest today Ronnie Hour.[163.41][163.41](Applause).
Alderman from the third?
Um, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my special guest today Mark Kason.[174.01][174.01](Applause).
Welcome, Mark.
Glad to see you here.
Alderman from the fourteenth?
I'd like to have as my special honored guest Gary Otten from Painters District Council, number two.[187.87][187.87](Applause).
Alderman from the sixteenth?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my special guest today's, today, David Holmes and Don Summers with the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, and Steve Spreck with Communication Workers. Thank you.[203.12][203.12](Applause).
Alderman from first?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I have my honored guest. I'd like to present Dawn DeViver, Master on Public Policy at Washington University. She's also doing a fellowship in biotech at Washington University, and she's looking at disparities in healthcare for the city of St. Louis, and hopefully will be working closely with the disparity in healthcare in both north and south St. Louis. I ask the board to welcome her to the city and to welcome her to the effort of improving the quality of health in the city of St. Louis.
Well, thank you.[252.51][252.51](Applause). Alderman from the twelfth?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce my special guest today, uh, Tim Olko, who is one of my residents, and also a special agent of the county.[267.83][267.83](Applause).
Alderman from the fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have, as usual, my special guest at Ameren U.E. and A.T.N.T. Group, and my very special guest today is Alderman Shane Cone. Thank you.[286.62][286.62](Applause).
The very tan Alderman Shane Cone, a nice tan guy. Alderman from the eighth?
Good morning, Mr. President. I didn't recognize Alderman Tony's dressed a little conventionally today.[302.33][302.33](Laughter). But as my special guest, I have some constituents here. I have Ms. Carlinda Williams, her daughter Dominique, who is getting a Girl Scout badge, visiting various public entities and seeing how they operate, and their friend Lizé. Uh, they're with me this morning.[326.02][326.02](Applause).
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the first? I thought you said it. Any further introductions? Any further inductions? Alderman from the tenth? Like to wrap us up. Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Good morning. I have no guess, I'm just happy to be here. But today is June first. I'm happy to be anywhere these days.[358.53][358.53](Laughter). Today's for you folks trying to make a decision today while we're down here. Today is June first, which is National Flip a Coin Day. Use it in good taste today.[366.06][366.06](Laughter) (Applause).
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for approval of the minutes of the May eighteenth meeting.
Move by Alderman from thirteenth, second by Alderman from eleventh. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
We will dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our, Alderman from the twenty-eighth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would request that Board Bills fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen be moved to the perfection consent calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change.
So noted.
Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our former calendars? We'll dispense with line items nine and ten. First reading of Board Bills.
Board Bill fifty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Troop and Arness, to repeal ordinance six-six-eight, six-eight relating to traffic control. Board Bill fifty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Troop and Arness pertaining to renaming of the neighborhood, changing the name of neighborhood recognized as Mark Twain Neighborhood to the Wayne Walker Neighborhood. Board Bill number fifty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-nine oh five through thirty-nine oh seven Castleman containing a severability clause. Board Bill sixty, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight oh eight Castleman containing a severability clause. Board Bill sixty-one, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a[473.12][473.12](Cough).
What's the order?
Blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-five thirty-nine through thirty-five forty-seven Wisconsin. Board Bill sixty-two, sponsored by Alderman Behringer, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-two oh one through fifty-two eleven Hampton containing a severability clause. Board Bill sixty-three, sponsored by Alderman Flowers, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Baden Scattered Sites five. Board Bill sixty-four, sponsored by Alderman Carter, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Walnut Park Scattered, Walnut Park West Scattered Sites. Board Bill sixty-five, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for fifty-twenty-five Patterson. Board Bill sixty-six, sponsored by Alderman Florida, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight seventy-eight through eighty Arsenal. Board Bill sixty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Florida, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-six eighteen through twenty Hartford. Board Bill sixty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Florida, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight thirty-seven McDonald. Board Bill sixty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for sixty-nine sixty-nine Olita. Board Bill seventy, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for fifteen seventy-four through eighty-two Fairmont. Board Bill seventy-one, sponsored by Alderman Wessels, in ordinance recommended by the planning commission repealing part of Section five of ordinance six-two-five-eight-eight relating to signs at carryout restaurants and motor fuel pumping stations containing a substitution clause, a severability clause, a savings clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill seventy-two, sponsored by Alderman Triplet, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment Authorizing and Directing the Issuements of Delivery of Not to Exceed One Million Seven Hundred Thousand Dollars Plus Issuance Cost Principal Amount of Tax Increment Revenue Notes for fifteen forty-nine through sixteen oh one South Jefferson containing a severability clause. Board Bill seventy-three, sponsored by Alderman Triplet, in ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city and Shoto Crossing Community Improvement District containing a severability clause. Board Bill seventy-four, sponsored by Alderman Triplet, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-eight thirty through twenty-eight thirty-eight Magnolia containing a severability clause. Board Bill seventy-five, sponsored by Alderman Triplet, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-three fifty-five Hickory. Board Bill seventy-six, sponsored by Alderman Triplet, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-three forty-six Hickory. Board Bill seventy-seven, sponsored by Alderman Triplet, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-one twenty-four Oregon. Board Bill seventy-eight, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, in ordinance adopted pursuant to Chapter twenty-four of the Revised Code extending the boundaries of Hyde Park Historic District. Board Bill seventy-nine, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Wessels, in ordinance recommended by the planning commission pertaining to farm basis-based districts creating a new zoning overlay district in the zoning code containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill eighty, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty-three thirty-six Vista containing a severability clause. Board Bill eighty-one, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty-five oh one through forty-five oh three Wichita containing a severability clause. Board Bill eighty-two, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty-two twenty-four through forty-two thirty Gibson containing a severability clause. Board Bill eighty-three, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty-three forty-five R. Co. containing a severability clause. Board Bill eighty-four, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-two hundred through twenty-two oh two Wyoming containing a severability clause. Board Bill eighty-five, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-four fifty Missouri containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill seventy-eight, to the Streets Committee Board, to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill fifty-seven and seventy-eight, to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill seventy-three, to the Housing Committee, Board Bills sixty-two, fifty-eight, seventy-one, seventy-two, and seventy-nine, and to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, and eighty-five. That's the extent of reference to committee.
We dispense with line items thirteen through fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill fourteen, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Cruzen, in ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the Treasury to deposit funds received into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account One appropriating nine million nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the said sales tax to the Bi-State Development Agency containing a severability clause. Board Bill fifteen, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Cruzen, in ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the Treasury to deposit funds received into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account Two appropriating nine million nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the said sales tax to the Bi-State Development Agency containing a severability clause. Board Bill sixteen, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Cruzen, in ordinance appropriating the sum of nineteen million nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which sum is hereby appropriated out of the Transportation Trust Fund to the Bi-State Development Agency for transportation purposes containing a severability clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for perfection of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from thirteenth, second by Alderman from eleventh. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. We dispense with line item sixteen, third reading consent.
Board Bill seven, committee substitute, eighteen, thirty-nine, forty-four, forty-five, and forty-seven.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on motion for the third reading consent
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bills on the consent (inaudible).
Move by Alderman from thirteenth, second by Alderman from twenty-seventh. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Troop. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Triplet. Alderman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderman Howard. Alderman Florida. Alderman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderman Cruzen. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Troop. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Davis. Twenty-seven, aye votes.
By a vote, you stay in motion of Alderman from the thirteenth and third read and final passage of aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossments.
Board Bill fifty, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, in an ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission making appropriation for payment of the operating expenses, capital equipment, and improvement expenses involving Parking Division assets and debt services expenses of the Parking Division of the Treasurer's Office, Keel, Argyle, Shoto, Williams Paper, Central Downtown, Buckingham Couples and Justice Parking Facilities containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the third, you've recognized on third reading and final passage of Board Bill number fifty.
Um, Mr. President, members of the board, I move for final passage of Board Bill number fifty.
Move by Alderman from the third, I entertain a second by Alderman from twenty-second. Alderman, please proceed.
Um, Mr. President, members of the board, this is the board bill that took up almost two hours last week, where we discussed every aspect of it and everything about it. As we all know, the Treasurer of the city of St. Louis is not going to run for reelection. However, at this point in time, there has to be a board bill that would outline the expenditures of those dollars for the coming year, because the new Treasurer coming in in January will have the opportunity to dissect, rewrite, and do whatever he chooses is best for that department after he has been there and had an opportunity to study what's going on and make whatever changes that he, as the new Treasurer, would like to make. I know there are a lot of people that are unhappy, well, not a lot of them, but there's a few that are unhappy with it, with this bill, but nevertheless, the person that's in charge and has been there for all of these years, dealing with the budget of the Treasury Department, Parking Division Division, came to the committee, they spent almost three hours answering every question that we put to them relative to this budget that we have in our hand here. Without this budget, there would not be any guidelines for the new Treasurer to begin to change or alter or do whatever he wants with it. But this, what we've got in our hands today is what the Treasurer Department has written as how the Parking Division Division should operate in the coming year. But in January of two thousand thirteen, we will have a new Treasurer, and that individual will have the opportunity to make whatever changes they deem necessary to Board Bill fifty and expenditures of those dollars. So I re, um, I, my motion, renew my motion to pass, final pass Board Bill fifty, and I'm not answering any questions.[1185.15][1185.15](Laughter).
Alderman from the thirteenth, you're recognized, but please don't ask the Alderman from the third to yield.[1194.15][1194.15](Laughter).
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I rise in opposition. I'm going to vote no on this board bill, just as I have many years prior. I understand that, you know, if, if this board bill isn't passed, you know, it would create problems, and if, if we do cut anything out of it, there's no guarantee that it, it's unlikely that there would, any of the money would flow to the general fund, because the Treasurer under the current law has control over that funding. Uh, but, having said that, um, you know, I'd like to point out that in the last two years, Parking Division has generated twenty-six point two million dollars. Out of that, two hundred thousand dollars has went to the general fund to help pay for police, fire, and other vital city services that you need, that I need, and certainly our constituents need. You know, that, that's got to change. That means that every ten dollar ticket, let's say every ten dollar parking ticket that's paid nine dollars and ninety-two cents stays in the Treasurer's office to pay for their expenses. Eight cents goes to the general fund to help pay for these vital city services that we depend on. You know, the Ways and Means Committee, we've been working on the budget now for weeks, and, you know, we try to move a hundred thousand here, fifty thousand there. You know, there's money available here. The money's there, it's in the Parking Division. How much should we be getting? Should it be a million, two million, three million? Uh, I don't know, but we're going to find out next year. So I would, I would say I'm opposed to this. I think it's a waste of city funds. I've said it for a long time. As a matter of fact, I'm bringing out an old friend of mine. It's been in my office since nineteen ninety-three, when I first tried to present it to Larry Williams, City Treasurer. It's the Golden Fleece Award, with Honorable Larry Williams, Treasurer, City of St. Louis, nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three. You know, I, of course, he did not care to display it in his office. Brian Wabi came into my office and accosted me after that, after I offered it to him, and, uh, so some things don't change very quickly. This budget hasn't changed. Brian Wabi hasn't changed. Larry Williams hasn't changed. So let's have change January first of next year. Thank you.[1364.63][1364.63](Laughter).
Alderman from the, all right. Okay, Alderman from the twenty-fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna bore people and rehash everything I said last week, but I am going to say that this was really kind of a missed opportunity. I mean, there seems to be a lot of confusion on what happens if we make any changes to this budget, and making a few small changes, which we proposed last week, would have been a great test, just to see, you know, what happens to the money? Does the Treasurer's Office come back and, you know, ask for that money to be reinstated? And if they do, you know, is there some scrutiny on how that money is spent? So it's a little, it's a little disappointing that we can't even exercise some control over a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars out of fourteen million dollars in the, in the Parking Division. And next year, next April, when we get this budget, um, when we get this budget in committee, I, I hope the new Treasurer, the new Treasurer's representative who presents the budget brings the list of employees to the committee hearing, because I think that's really, that's really where some of the rubber is, is hitting the road on this budget. We need the chance, we need the chance in committee to scrutinize the positions that are inside the Parking Division. We didn't have that chance this year. We didn't have that chance last year. Um, a lump sum salary figure is not good enough in a budget. If I presented a budget like that, you know, to my employer for, hey, I got, I got ten employees I'm managing, I just want, you know, six hundred thousand bucks for their, for staffing, I'd be, you know, laughed out of the office. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta demonstrate who the, you know, what the, what the positions are, what those people are doing. So whoever the Treasurer is next year, uh, I think I'm sending that message now, and hopefully they'll hear it. Bring us the list of employees and, you know, because we can't, we cannot keep doing this the way we're doing it right now. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any further, Alderman from the eighth?
Yes, good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I understand the Alderman from the twenty-fourth's resolve, and, and I would normally agree with him and be voting for each of his issues, but I, I also would agree with the Alderman from the third that, you know, we will have new management in that office, and I know with us today are probably two, the two most competent people that are running for that office. Both Aldermen are very experienced with the budget, and they're both honest, and they're both sincere about helping the city, because they have firsthand knowledge. And knowing both of these individuals, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Wessels, I know that we will see the turnaround in that office in January of, of one of our brethren become the, the City Treasurer. And so I'm comfortable following Alderman Bosley's lead today.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the third, you're now recognized to close.
Uh, Mr. President and members of the board, the Treasurer's Office over there handles almost all of the money that comes into the city of St. Louis. They have the responsibility, along with the Comptroller, of taking all of the tax dollars and other money that the city receives, and they have to every day take those dollars and form them out to various banks throughout the country in order to be able to raise the money necessary in order to balance the budget that we use. That is what they do. They've been doing it for years. Now, in that position, don't think for one minute that IRS, the Comptroller's Office, and up there at the state, Secretary of State and those offices up there have not looked at that budget over and over and over again. If there was something improper, something wrong happening in there, they certainly would do what their job calls for, and that's to point it out. But because when you have different people taking offices, those people, because they're running for that office, have determined that they can make change, and if they don't make any change, they're just a rubber stamp and go along with anything. But they're looking at those offices, those people who are candidates for the Treasurer of the city of St. Louis, I'm sure they look that thing inside out, and they should, or they shouldn't even be running for that office, and come up with whatever ideas they have that are going to make the best positive difference for the city of St. Louis. And that's what it's all about. It's about the city. It ain't about us. It's about those people who elect us to look out for their best interests, and those people that pay taxes into the city of St. Louis, and even those parking tickets that they pay for, and they don't like it, they want you to take those dollars and do the very best you can for the city of St. Louis. So what I'm saying in short, if you have the Comptroller, you have the Secretary of State, you have the people that are responsible on the state, and auditors, looking at these dollars that are being spent, and they haven't found anything wrong with it, but if those running for Treasurer have a better idea, bring it on, because the taxpayers of this city deserve whatever is best and in their best interest for the use of their dollars. So we've already been through this. We have ironed this thing, we have shaken this thing, we have looked at it, we have turned it upside down and inside out, and I certainly would hope and would support anything that's better than what we got. See, and everybody has a different idea about things. Always look at people running for office, like the three blind men that were asked to appraise an elephant. The first blind man got him by the tail, and he said, oh, an elephant is like a snake. The other blind man got the elephant, they felt him in the side, he say he's like a wall. And the other one got the elephant by the leg and said And the other one got the elephant by the leg and said he's like a big tree. All of them were right in what it was that they could see, but they are limited vision there. But only who could see that full elephant would know what he was. So when you get into that office and you find something that needs to be changed that's going to be in the best interest of this city, then I entreat you to do that. I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the third, second by Alderman from the twenty-second, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number Fifty. Madam Clerk, please call the rope.
Alderman Troop. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Triplet. Alderman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnoldwitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderman Howard. I didn't hear your vote. Alderman Florida.
Alderman Howard. There we go.
Al, thank you. Alderman Florida. Al, Alderman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Schmid. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vicaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone.
That's an I.
Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Florida. Alderman Rhodey. Twenty-five, I votes, two, no votes.
By your vote, you stand the motion of Alderman from the third and third read and finally pass Board Bill Number Fifty.
That's the extent of third reading report of engrossment and final passage.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills Seven, Committee Substitute eighteen thirty-nine forty-four forty-five forty-seven and fifty.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. Courtesy Resolution.
Resolution Thirty-Six, sponsored by Alderman Flowers. Board of Aldermen recognize the many accomplishments of Dr. Maribeth Elaine Gentry, Gentry.
I move for adoption our Courtesy Resolution calendar, I entertain the second on it, second by Alderman from the twenty-second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of Courtesy Resolution.
With dispense for line item twenty-one and twenty-two, Ms. Elaine has unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Thursday Housing Committee meeting, ten AM in the Kennedy Room. Friday Full Board Meeting, ten AM in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcement.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the second.
For the board, thank you for my microphone. And, uh, tonight is the night. Tonight is live on the rocks. And it's a little cold, so bring your blanket, but I'm sure, uh, we're going to heat it up tonight. Um, it's at the Chain of Rocks Bridge from six to midnight. Uh, Me Hungry will be there with food. We will have adult beverages. And bring your family, bring your dog. You can walk across the bridge all night long to midnight. Just no funny business on the bridge. And, uh, also my final announcement for June fifth is our last day for our OP Spot Spay and Neuter Program. So far, we have spayed and neutered forty animals. We have chipped over twenty and we have vaccinated about seventeen. So it's going very successful and I hope we can bust at least fifty on Tuesday. So if anyone needs to make an appointment, just call me at three eight eight three four four four.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the ninth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. You can spend all day tomorrow down in the Ninth Ward. First, in Benton Park West, about eight o'clock, they're having a neighborhood-wide garage sale. So take your cash, your checkbooks. I don't think they take MasterCard or any plastic or anything, but, um, that goes from eight o'clock till twelve PM. So, and then at Benton Park, they have their first, uh, concert in the park. And there also Stray Rescue is going to be there. And we're going to have dog chipping for, uh, twenty dollars a dog or a cat if they bring them up. So Stray Rescue's going to be there, pet adoptions, and then pet chipping. So it's important to bring your pet down there and get it chipped. If you don't, it's a bargain price. It'll be a lot of fun. And then Cherokee Street, Cherokee Station, uh, between Indiana and Nebraska, they've got a, uh, an ordeal that's called Indy Hop where they're shuttling between the Grove and Cherokee Street. So I don't have a timeline on that with me, but that'll be fun and come on down and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the fourteenth?
I'd like to remind everybody that St. John the Baptist Parish is having their annual school picnic on Wednesday, June sixth. Rides, lunch, bingo. Come on by and enjoy the fun. Uh, St. John's is on Delores, just east of Graboy.
Alderman from the seventh?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce that next Saturday, not tomorrow, but next Saturday, uh, the seventh or ninth, Soulard Market will have the Wash U's mammogram van there for women who are over forty who need a mammogram. Um, they're starting at seven AM so that those people who have to go to work will be able to get in there and get out. They'll be making, doing the mammograms from seven to two, and you can make an appointment at seven four seven seven two two two. Also, tomorrow is the Lafayette Square House Tour, tomorrow and Saturday. And then tomorrow night in Lafayette Park, there will be a concert at six PM with Ralph Butler's Band. So if you're interested in that, come out, it's free.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-seventh?
Mr. President, uh, tomorrow, June second, uh, at City Hope Bible Church, Area Health Council will have its annual health walk. Uh, it's, will be located at Riverview on West Florissant. Um, we encourage everyone to come out. If you need more information, you can go call my office. And also, I just noticed one of my, um, guests, uh, Demetrius Alfred of Local Seventy-three is here in the chambers as well.
Alderman from the twelfth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, tomorrow, also June second, is the parade and picnic for the Macklin Hart Parry's. So be plenty of rides for kids of all ages and, uh, plenty of cold beer.
Alderman from the twentieth?
Mr. President, members of the board, uh, the Indy Hop on Cherokee and in the Grove is also in the twentieth. It will be from noon to six. You can get the shuttle at Iowa and Cherokee Street. There will be fifteen, um, uh, breweries that will have samplings at the various locations of some fifty independent businesses, both in the Grove and on Cherokee Street. So we ask people to come down, be safe, have a good time, and respect the neighborhood while you're there, please. Also, um, uh, there is on June the fifth, an election. It seems to have passed, uh, by a lot of people and gone under the radar. Proposition Y seems pretty clear because there's been a lot of talk about that. But I would encourage people to look at their sample ballot. There are eight other propositions. Um, they seem a bit complicated to me, so I would be cautious. Please read those and please vote on Tuesday the fifth. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the twenty-fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, one of my favorite events is currently going on. Um, the St. Louis Shakespeare Festival has a fellow, uh, in Forest Park right now. I, I can't remember the, the, uh, the last day, but I think they're running for, for two more weeks. There's going to be some beautiful evenings this weekend, uh, to stop by. And if you're smart, you'll go, uh, before the last night, which is what I usually do because it'll be easier to get a seat. In addition, uh, France Park Neighborhood Association is having, uh, movie night tomorrow night. Um, I believe the movie is Happy Feet Two. Uh, so if you're into penguins and who isn't into penguins, uh, come out tomorrow evening to France Park and, uh, watch a movie with the Neighborhood Association. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the fifth?
Thank you, Mr. Is it on? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would just like to announce that on Thursday, June the seventh, the Fifth Ward will be having their eighth annual job fair. We have over fifty, uh, employers that have committed to offer jobs on the spot and also assist with, uh, resume training. Myself, along with Penny Hubbard, the candidate for State Rep of the Seventy-eight District, is hosting this event. And I would like for you all to spread the word. Um, as you all know, unemployment rates have hiked in the last couple of months, so it's important that we constituents employ. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the nineteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first, I wanted to remind everyone, uh, who's listening and for you to share with others, today is the last day to register to vote if you plan to vote in the August primary. Today, June first, is the last day. So, um, if you know someone or if someone is listening and you have a friend, relative, whatever, get them there to register so that they can vote in the August primary. Uh, I'd like to share with you that, uh, Urban Chestnut, uh, one of the new brewing companies on Washington Avenue, right at Compton, will be opening a new, uh, beer garden, uh, this weekend. And it's quite lovely. It reminds you of the German beer gardens. Uh, I think the architecture there and what they've done there is quite nice. Also Circus Floor is opening this weekend, so I'm looking forward to seeing more people in the Grand Center area enjoying the circus. Uh, Botanical Heights Residence, we're having movie night Thursday, June seventh, coming up. I'd like to see a lot of you there. We'll have the popcorn, snow cones, all of that. And then for Tiffany Residence in Tiffany Park, we'll have movie night June twenty-eighth. And I'd like to see that park full of folks, and we're going to have a lot of other information and fun things to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We have in the Fourth Ward, all, all summer long, an annual flea market on Martin Luther King from Marcus to Van de Venner, booths are available. We also have in the Veal Archet on, uh, Sarah and Evans, uh, there are planter boxes available so you can still plant your fruit, vegetables, and flowers at the Veal Archet on Evans and Sarah. So please, if you like a booth or a planter box, please call me at four eight six sixteen eighty-seven and I'll do, I'll refer you to, to the powers that be. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to excuse the Alderman from the seventeenth ward due to necessary absence.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the eleventh. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, ten AM, June eighth.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the eleventh. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, we stand to adjourn.